So, good evening, everybody. Welcome to this special city council meeting for South Burlington on September twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty five. We're going to begin with the pledge of allegiance. Ann, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ann. Item number two, instructions on exiting this building in case of emergency and review of our technology options. Jesse Baker, City Manager.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight. If there is an emergency in this room, you can go out the rear of the auditorium either on the left or right-hand side, and then go left or right to get outside. If you are participating remotely, if you would like to speak during public comment or one of the presenters here tonight, you can indicate your interest in speaking in the Q and A section or raise your hand, and I'll have the chair call on you. Otherwise, we are not monitoring the chat for content.
Thank you, Jesse. Item three, agenda review. Do we have any additions, deletions, or changes in the order of our agenda items tonight? All right, seeing none.
I don't, I just need a writing implement. It's somewhere between my car and here, I lost my-
Writing implement?
Yes.
Okay, so, like, you need a pencil?
Yeah.
I've got one if you, oh, here comes one. Oh, we like those. Thank you. We're now going to move on to item number four, which is comments and questions from the public for things that are not on our agenda tonight. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak about something that is not on our agenda tonight?
So, the purpose of this meeting is to call a special meeting primarily for the purpose of discussing the necessity of a shared use path on Dorset Street. If you're here for that agenda item, that will come later. This section of the agenda right now is for anyone who wants to speak to any item that's not related to that agenda item.
Is there anybody online at all?
Good question. There are twelve attendees online, and no one has their hand up.
Okay, so, we're nobody online or in the auditorium, which is to speak about something that is not on the rest of the agenda. Is that true? Okay, then we're going to move on to item five, which is the consent agenda. And we have one AP warrant document. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Thank you. Now, we're at item five, which is a public hearing. So, I'm going to say, good evening, every-
If I can interrupt, so I'm going to step down from the table, and the city attorney is going to step up, and I will be down there.
So, we are here for a public hearing on the Dorset Street Shared Use Path. This hearing is for the purpose of receiving testimony and hearing from all interested parties in whether the public good necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the city of South Burlington warrant the laying out and condemnation of certain rights and easement, and whether a person through whose land the Dorset Street Shared Use Path passes or abuts is entitled to compensation or damages for the taking of said rights and easements on the parcels of land known as fifteen eighty Dorset Street, fifteen fifty Dorset Street, and fifteen twenty Dorset Street. In this meeting, the city council will be acting in a quasi-judicial capacity. This hearing will begin with the city's presentation, and that will be followed with an opportunity to cross-examine the city's witnesses by the interested parties or the representatives. The city will then have an opportunity to provide rebuttal testimony. Once that is complete, the interested persons may present their positions. These presentations will be subject to cross-examination by the city, and the interested persons will have the opportunity to provide rebuttal testimony after that. Following the presentations, each party may present an extremely brief closing statement. Once all the evidence has been presented, the hearing will be closed, and the council will issue our decision on the matter in writing within sixty days. It is our expectation that all parties will be courteous and respectful to one another. All parties will be provided with as much time as they need to present relevant material and not unduly repetitious evidence relating to the matter before us. Disrespectful, discourteous, or threatening words or actions will not be tolerated. With that, I call for motion to open the public hearing, please.
So, moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous, and we are now in the public hearing. So, the city will go first, and please identify yourselves before you start.
Hi, I'm Dave Rue from SPNF Attorneys in Burlington. We are outside counsel to the city who have been working on the Dorset Street Shared Use Path or Dorset Street Path Project for two or three years now. The purpose of this hearing is to take testimony from the city and all those interested in the laying out of a right-of-way for the Dorset Street Bike Path. The city's case is being presented by prefiled testimony. So, what you have in the giant binder clips that I just gave you is testimony from Erica Qualand Towel, the Deputy Director of Capital Projects for the city, as to necessity for the right-of-way and towards the end, compensation with reference to exhibits. There's an exhibit list in there as well. We'd like to enter all of that into the record. If you would like me to go through the exhibits, I'm happy to. In addition to the testimony of Erica Qualand Towel, we have testimony from Israel Maynard from Stantec, who was the project engineer. Israel's testimony only references the last exhibit, which is a color-coded exhibit that shows the difference between the permanent and temporary rights. But having, having done the prefiled testimony, we think this completes the city's case in chief, so to speak, and provides all the evidence that the council will need to determine whether this project is necessary, and then what damages the landowners are due.
Thank you. Do you want to take us through the project, Erica? Or some detail level?
You can do a project overview if you would like. I mean, most of it is here in the prefiled testimony, so you can review this during your deliberative session.
Yeah.
Under the law, you have sixty days to issue a written decision. So, sort of the point of the prefiled testimony is to get the city's case in the record, and then from there, we can handle any questions that are present this evening from those that are participating.
Okay. Did you want to give any review at all, or?
I can give you the thirty seconds.
Okay.
So, I'm Erica Qualand Towel, Deputy Director of Capital Projects for the city at Public Works. I've been with the city since July two thousand and twenty-two. This project, there are a couple of key dates that I can just run you through. So, it was identified as a potential project originally in nineteen ninety-six on the comprehensive plan. In two thousand and fourteen, there was a resident-led effort to bring it back to, bring it back as a priority. Two thousand and sixteen, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, again, kind of brought this up as a priority. It was studied in the scoping study process by an engineering consulting firm, and that study was published in two thousand and seventeen. That is Exhibit One that you have there. And then the design that was preferred in that project that was adopted as the preferred alternative has since received a grant from the Vermont Agency of Transportation, which was in two thousand and nineteen. And since that point, there was survey, conceptual design, preliminary design, and then the right-of-way phase, which started right as I had started at the city in two thousand and twenty-two.
So, it's my understanding that all interested parties have received that stack of papers, and they've-
Yes, and if anybody else needs another copy, I have at least one more available.
But the landowners themselves have received that far in advance?
No, they just received it this evening.
They just received it this evening?
Yes.
Okay, is there anything different in those papers than previous papers that they've received?
No, these are primarily exhibits of letters and other forms of notice indicating that the property owners did receive not only notice of this hearing thirty days in advance in compliance with statute, but also written offers of compensation back in the fall, as well as they had been given other notice letters for, with sample deeds and things like that that establish the easements that are proposed to be acquired on each of their parcels.
Okay.
The property owners involved are known as Parcel Six and Seven, that's owned by Robert Chittenden II, and then Parcel Ten owned by Mr. and Mrs. Di Maroni. And they have received numerous letters from the city about this over the past at least two, maybe three years.
Okay, thank you. Is the council allowed to ask any questions, or do we want to-
Yeah, council can feel free to ask any questions about the project, and then, you know, other people are also wel- welcome to ask questions.
Okay, but at this point, the, the landowners are allowed to cross-examine, correct?
Correct, at this point, if the, if the council doesn't have questions, at this point, the, the interested parties who are the, the parties who are going to be affected by the, by the city's proposed action here would get an opportunity to ask, to ask questions of the witnesses that the city has put forward.
Thank you. Does council have questions?
It'd be helpful to me, Tim, if Colin could review the process council will be, will be involved tonight, what our role and responsibilities are.
Sure.
That would be helpful, thank you.
Sure. So, so tonight, we are operating a quasi-judicial function. We are, as a council, you are the decision-makers. You are overseeing this hearing process. And what we are doing is receiving evidence from both the city and the interested parties. And what you will do with that evidence is then close the evidence and then have an opportunity to deliberate, review it, and issue a decision in writing at a later date. That decision has to be issued in sixty days. Your, your goal, what you're being asked, not your goal, what you're being asked to do is determine whether the public good necessity and convenience of the inhabitants of the city of South Burlington warrant the condemning of the property that the city is suggesting be condemned.
In addition, you're being asked to determine whether those property owners are entitled to compensation or damages for the acquisition of the property rights. And you will see there are compensation offer letters in the exhibits here, as well as valuations as to each particular right that is proposed to be acquired based on the assessed value of the properties.
So, all offers made by the city have, have, have been rejected at this point?
They've not been accepted.
They've not been accepted, that's a better phrase, okay, got it. Other questions from council?
We have sixty days to enter a, a decision.
Correct, by, by statute, we're required to issue a decision within sixty days.
Is this the, the opportunity for both the homeowners and us to decide? And when this is over, I mean, to present their information, and when this is over, then we, as a council, have sixty days to talk about it and make our decision? Or is there other opportunities for information?
No, that's correct. Tonight is the opportunity for both the city and the interested parties to present evidence to you to consider. Once that evidence is closed, we have sixty, the city council has sixty days to make its determination. No further evidence will be admitted. You make your decision based on what has been submitted at that time.
Thank you.
Would this be the right time to ask how the valuations were determined and, and what they are? Not sure, we've kind of been through that, the, the value of the easements?
Sure, well, it's in, a lot of the explanation for that is already in the prefiled testimony that Erica has supplied with you today, particularly on pages, yeah, nine and ten, I believe. But i- in essence, and I guess I should let Erica walk through this so the lawyer isn't the one testifying.
Yes, I can do that for you. So, the waiver valuation methodology was used here rather than a formal appraisal process because of the value of the property that was being looked at, the value of the easements. When the value is under twenty-five thousand dollars, a formal appraisal is not needed. You can go through the waiver valuation process. And so, that is what we went through, and that is in accordance with VTRAN standards as well as the Federal Highways Uniform Act. And so, the way that works is using the land value, not the building or dwelling value, just the land value of the parcel based on the city's assessed value. Get a per-square-foot price, and then that is applied to each of the easements at a different discounted ratio. For permanent easements, you can apply between seventy-five to ninety-five percent. In the state of Vermont, we typically apply ninety-five percent. So, any permanent easements were evaluated or valued at ninety-five percent of that per-square-foot, multiplied by the square footage. And temporary easements can be between ten and twenty-five percent. We value those at twenty-five percent here. And then there are some minimums that have to be applied, and the rounding that happens is outlined in the testimony, but that is the process.
How is the cost per acre determined?
That is based on the current assessed value of the land. And included in here, I spoke with Emily Norway, our assessor, and have confirmed that the assessed land values are current that were used.
Thank you. Other questions from council?
I have a question. We just completed a site visit. Do we have a summary for each of the parcels of what, what amount of property is a temporary easement? What's a permanent? And then what the city would have accessed, or maybe what the total is and what the city already had access to?
Yes, so that's laid out in a few different places. There are a couple of ways that it's presented. On the right-of-way plans themselves, Exhibit Twelve, pages three- Oh, there's the color-coded. Exhibit, okay, Exhibit Two is the full set of plans. Pages three and four of that are laid out, they're called the quantity detail sheet, and that goes easement by easement. And then they are summarized in both the hearing or the offer letters. They are outlined in the proposed warranty deed of easements, and then also in the testimony.
I have a question. Were any counteroffers made by any of the landowners in response to the offers that you put out?
No, nothing had been accepted or proposed as a counteroffer.
Have you had questions from any of the landowners that you've answered? I- in a formal way, a, a letter, or? Have the landowners sent you any letters requesting information?
I have from these specific property owners, or, so, as a whole, I have gone back and forth with pretty much every property owner in the project at one point or another, and have had numerous meetings with a lot of them. I have received some specifically from the Mr. and Mrs. Di Maroni on Parcel Ten, and we had some correspondence and have met a couple of times to discuss the project. I have not had much communication with Mr. Chittenden on his two parcels.
Other questions from council? So, now is the opportunity for the landowners to cross-examine the city. If you have questions, please come forward.
And just keep in mind, this is an opportunity to ask the city's witnesses questions. You will also get an opportunity to present if you have a presentation to make as well.
Push the button, make sure it's green? Fully green, bright green?
Push, oh, it's real green now, okay.
And make sure you identify yourself.
I'm Laura Di Maroni, and I live at fifteen twenty Dorset Street. I'm hesitant to have us all accept this huge stack of paperwork without having an opportunity to see what's in it. We're told it's everything we've all been told or all we've all received. And we don't know what's in there. We've been given it five minutes ago, and that seems to be asking us to be a little bit naive about the process.
Erica, is there any information in here that has not been transmitted already to the landowners in some form or fashion? Or is there something new here that?
I think the newest thing might be the minutes of your July council meeting where you made a motion to commence the laying out process. The, and obviously, for example, Mrs. Di Maroni would not have seen a letter that was addressed to Mr. Chittenden, because it wouldn't have been delivered to Mrs. Di Maroni's house. But for the notice letters that went directly to them, they did not sign for the certified mailing of the hearing notice. However, we did send that by first-class mail, and we also had to serve the Di Maronis with personal service by Chittenden County Sheriff. Also, from a purely legal perspective, the statute states that the council is to hear from persons interested. That's the minimum bare requirement, so there's no requirement that they receive evidence in advance. Evidence could be, I could have presented all of this through testimony tonight, and it would have been the first time that they would have heard it as well.
But Erica, you've had discussions with the Di Maronis before, right? And have you shown them diagrams of where easements would be?
Yes, with each of the different offer packages that went out, there were, I don't remember exactly how many, it says in here how many they had been sent out. All of those included sheets of the plans, descriptions of the easement, the outline of their offer, the proposed warranty deeds, and have also corresponded by email with some additional details added to the plans, laying out some additional dimensions. So, plans have been shared with all interested parties throughout the process.
Okay, Mrs. Di Maroni, was it, is it true that the sheriffs had to serve your house with this notice of this meeting?
Yeah, we were never home when they dropped off the forms.
Okay, but you did receive a first-class letter? Okay.
Yeah, we knew, we were aware of this, and the packet included the information about both of Rob Chittenden's properties, too. I guess my, in, in talk, in referring to what you've just said, I did have several emails back and forth with you over the past year or two, which I do still have copies of. It wasn't asking you to explain the plan. It was to tell you that we needed exact footage because of our mound system, which is something I'm going to bring up when I get a chance to speak. That was never, I never got the information that I was asked. Every time I just got your, it's not available, it's not available. So, I had specific questions that I asked multiple times and never got information. So, it, it left us as, you know, not aware of what was really going to happen.
Do you want to ask that question now?
Well, I, it's not, is it time for me to give my opinion?
It's about asking questions of the city, I think, it's, it's appropriate.
I have a thing that I was going to hand out to you.
That's part of your, you know-
That's my thing, yeah, in case I mess up. I thought I'd give you each a copy of what I was supposed to say.
But if there's information that you need from the city, from Erica, now would be the time to ask that.
Okay, it's in here, but I'll read what I wrote, is that okay?
If you can limit it to the questions you have.
It does.
Okay.
It does. I have a question of, of, thank you. Can I ask a question of clarification?
Sure.
To Laura?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Laura, you said you didn't receive what you were asking for in terms of square footage or something like that. I am looking at a certified letter that says area square feet. So, that isn't what you were looking for? You notice it says approximately or about. It's nothing definite. This is our problem. Our, our mound system is very close to the construction of this path. And our engineer who designed the mound system for us, our, our septic system, mound system, is unable to determine with the information that's being given whether or not it will damage our mound system. He needs exact footage. Nothing that has been given to us includes exact footage. And Erica, you have said to me in several of the emails that the exact information won't be available until the project goes into final plans and bid plans. Those steps won't happen until after the right-of-way process. So, we're, we are being expected to do something that could be very dangerous to our property because we're asking for information, we're not being given.
Is, is part of your question to the city, will this path damage your septic system? Is, is that a clear question to ask?
It is a question, but we need to, because we need to know exactly how many feet this project will take temporarily and permanently on our property.
So, so the question is, we have a Stantec engineer here. Do you feel qualified to answer that question, knowing what you do about the topography of that, of that property? Or Erica, do you have an answer for that?
Yeah, go ahead. Either one of you can respond, it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, you just need to identify yourself first.
Yeah, so Israel Maynard with Stantec, so we were able to-
Israel did submit prefiled testimony as well, just so you guys are aware. That's the second set in your package.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so we did have the permit package from when they had their mound system redone, and we did evaluate that based on our current design. And the current design would not make a violation of any permit conditions. So, when they had their permit done, there's certain setbacks that they need from, from paved surfaces and from open channels and from steep slopes. And, and we did evaluate those conditions versus our design, and it does meet all the, the regulations for that.
So, you think your design is compatible with, with the existing condition of their septic system?
If it was built per-
If their system were built, you don't know what's underneath.
Yeah, exactly. And we didn't go survey where their actual system is.
Okay.
We just had the plans that were submitted and filed for permit. I mean, it is a thing that happens where a contractor goes out and he builds it fifteen feet from where the plans say it was.
True, okay, so you have the original plans, but you, you have to reconcile the plans with reality.
Yes, as long as that was built per their permit.
Right.
We're good.
At what point would that happen?
Yeah, so that's typically something we just assume that it was built as designed, yeah.
Okay.
Their, their engineer would have put a, or had a, a signature page on the permit that says this was built per plan.
Oh, but you don't have that.
I don't.
It would-
It was in their permit package, yeah.
So, as, every wastewater permit has a designer certification as the last piece of installing the system, where the designer certifies that the project was installed as designed and files that with the Agency of Natural Resources, closing out the permit. So, in other words, what Israel is saying is assuming, he assumes the permit was valid and properly certified, and that the system was built where it was designed and where it was supposed to be located per the plans, and he accommodated that in his drawings.
Yeah, since they're underground systems, we don't go through the effort of totally finding every single system out in the area, because the only way to truly verify where it is is to dig it up and find the trench.
And these are, what, ninety percent plans you would call them, correct? Is that?
Yeah, for our design plans.
Right, and that's, you don't get to a hundred percent until before or after the project gets built?
So, we would get there before the project gets built, so basically-
Sorry, I meant bid, my bad.
Yeah, between ninety, ninety and a hundred is basically just making any changes that we need to make as a result of right-of-way negotiations.
So, the documentation you have about their septic system is compatible with the project the way it is today?
Yes.
With, with the information that you have?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have more questions?
Well, I wonder why we were never told that. I've been asking this for months. How do we determine whether or not the path is being built where our mound system is? Now, you're saying you're going to accept the plans that are already here that show where the mound system is- Now you're saying you're going to accept the plans that are already here that show where the mound system is. Why are we, is it because your information is all sort of ambiguous? It's more or less this many square feet or approximately this many feet? If you read the easement, the warranty easement deed, that's the wording. That's not definite. Even now, you're assuming what we offered is definite.
Can you comment on how these plans move forward and why sometimes there are tolerances on the easement footages?
Yes, absolutely. So Erica, call and toll again. I don't know if we need to every time we swap, but yeah, so there is always, as with there would have been with the mound system plans, there are always some tolerances when something, when you go into the ground, you don't always know what it's going to be. So you lay it out as best as you can with the information that you have based on your surface survey and topography and documented information about where pipes might be, where existing features and infrastructure are. And so to say with 100% certainty that it's not going to move an inch or so one direction is not something that's feasible to do, even at the 100% plans. As we dig something up, you might find something else, which is why some of those tolerances are very important to have so that we can make sure that we are staying within any easements that we are acquiring. So we have that space also.
But was there communication to the Di Maronis that if their septic plan is true, then this project is compatible?
I'm pulling up one thing briefly. So looking at the primary thread that I have, the email thread, which dates back to March of this year, there were some back and forths between Mrs. Di Maroni and myself just requesting a copy of the bid plans showing the actual footage impact on our properties, their properties. And so I had sent another copy of the plans. My understanding was that footage was the physical layout. And she had requested more detail, so I added some key dimensions to that, similar to what we saw out in the field where the flags were laid out, some key areas where dimensions were. And so I had sent that. And here, the questions weren't about the septic system. I recall that we talked about the mound at an in-person meeting that a number of us on the project team went to and discussed. I don't, I remember that it was brought up. I don't remember if we had the full wastewater permit information at that time.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up question.
Sure, go ahead.
So what I'm hearing is that if the Di Maronis' septic system was built per permit and as it was signed off on, there would be no impact on that system. If it was not built according to the permit and what was signed off on, I'm assuming that that would be their liability. However, my question is, if in the process of doing this work, you discovered that in fact what was built was not what was permitted, how would that get resolved?
I'm not sure, are you able to speak to that better? There, there are different avenues we could take during that process when we've had different conflicts that we've come across in construction. Do you have some, anything?
I'm just asking because I hear that that's a big concern for the Di Maronis. So what if during this process, their septic system is impacted? How does that get dealt with?
Yeah, so if it was impacted, so say it was not built where the plan says and is built much closer to the road, then it's in violation of its permit and is therefore, it's non-compliant, so it would have to be relocated.
So that's a separate issue and a new issue that hadn't been contemplated before. The more specific question is, if it is where it says it is, you know, is it compatible with this plan with the dimensions of the path that have been defined so far? So your position is that if that's true, it is compatible. So Ms. Di Maroni, what other questions do you have? Because we can only deal with what we believe is true about your septic system at this point.
Right, and I, you know, I believe that what is permitted is what was there. It's just, as Erica said, there's always the wiggle room when things are done. And that's what the problem will be if that wiggle room does impact our mound system. What's done then?
Yeah, according to them, it's compatible. So now the next question is, do you have other points that you want to ask them questions about that are in your presentation before we go to Mr. Chittenden?
Yeah, I do, I do.
Go ahead.
And we mentioned it during the site visit, is Green Mountain Power aware of the fact that the pole is going to be moved further away from the street so that they will have to access the pole farther than they normally do? That's moving the pole on our property.
Yes, Green Mountain Power has been involved with all the utility relocation plans. And they've seen the plans multiple times and had a chance to provide input on the pole relocations.
And how do they plan to access the pole?
I can't speak to how they plan to access the poles. But they have agreed to the relocation plan, so my understanding is that they believe they're maintainable.
Isaac, could you just come a little closer to your, or pull the microphone closer to you next time? Mrs. Di Maroni, are you trying to ask, what is it that you're trying to ask about the pole and their access to the pole? Because there isn't there a utility easement that's going to be, exist around the pole after it gets moved?
Yes, they'll have a utility maintenance easement, and that's for clearing vegetation and things that would interfere with the lines.
So what is your question?
Well, Steve used to work for the phone company and worked with the power company. And there was a stipulation on how far they could reach into property from the road to work on their poles. This would make it more than that. And are they willing to do that? Is it still in place? Are they planning on coming, coming across the path, the rec path, in order to get to the pole? Are they planning to come across the bottom of our property?
Do you mean during construction or moving the pole or afterwards?
Both, because during the construction, they may consider that temporary. But if they always need to be able to get to it, we're talking now a permanent way to get to it.
Can you answer that question about the pole and how it would be? What would happen in terms of the pole? A new pole would be put further back and?
Yeah, so they're going to put that new pole a few feet back further than the existing.
How many feet?
In most cases, we're around two or three feet.
Two to three feet?
Yeah.
So if they wanted to access, so in order to, so before the path is constructed, they would have some machinery, right, right there where the path is going to be?
Yep.
To then drill the new hole, put the new pole in, right? And then afterwards, once the pole is set and the path is fixed, if they needed to access that pole, they would probably put their truck right on the path.
Most likely, yeah.
Most likely. Does that answer your question?
So they won't be coming across our property at all?
Their easement would allow them to, because it's a utility easement that would allow, so they would have full access to everything within that easement, but.
Do you mean an easement that's perpendicular to the road or parallel to the road?
So the utility easement is parallel to the road, so the aerials run overhead and then it's essentially 20 feet each side or 15 feet each side.
So it's basically the area under the wires, sort of, is, okay, I see what you're saying.
So they would come up, you know, they'd have to come up our driveway and then come across the lawn in order to get to the pole?
No, I don't think that's the way they would do it. I mean, like I said, I can't speak to Green Mountain Powers.
That's a question that I have.
Their maintenance methods, but they could, they're most likely going to just drive on the path. And the paths are designed to do that. They have their pavement, they've got enough subbase thickness, the subbase runs under the green strip. So light use or light, you know, if they're not doing it 15 times a week, it's, those paths will.
So they have an easement under the line by law, but they're going to find the easiest way to drive somewhere to do their work with the cherry picker bucket, right? So I don't think that's something you need to worry about. I mean, generally, if you see somebody working on a power line, they're on the side of the road, right? Or they're on a path or they're on a street. So that's just my general observation.
And can I clarify, today, Green Mountain Power has that same 20-foot easement under the line? That easement is just shifting a couple of feet?
So a lot of the existing lines are actually put in the existing state right-of-way. So they don't have an independent utility easement, or sorry, in this case, a city right-of-way. So in this case, since we're moving outside the existing city right-of-way, we need to provide for them a utility easement. And when you get new utility easement, it's 20 feet wide typically.
Usually utilities have licenses from municipal legislative bodies to place poles and wires within their road rights-of-way. I imagine that at some point, within the last 20 to 40 years, someone at the city granted Green Mountain Power a license to install these wires within the Dorset Street right-of-way.
Other questions?
Yes. I brought it up when we were at the site visit about the possibility of the space between Cider Mill Drive and our driveway, since it is a drainage heading, coming down toward, heading north. And there are cattails and other kinds of vegetation that indicate that it could be a wetland. Will that have an impact on whether the path, the construction can be done because it will be interfering with a wetland?
So we would go through a wetland permitting process. In that case, we work with the wetland regulators to determine what can and what's the best mitigation or minimization. So we minimize the wetland impacts as much as we can. These impacts, these wetlands are Class III, so they're roadside ditch wetlands, so they're not, they're not actually regulated by the state. So they're technically wetlands and we want to keep them and preserve them, but they're not protected by state regulation.
Okay.
In other words, that means you don't need a permit if you were to fill them in?
For those, for the wetlands that she's speaking about, there are some further on the project that are Class II, which we will be receiving a permit.
But for Class III wetlands, you don't need permits or approvals to impact them?
Yeah, no state permits.
There are survey markers across the street from our property that have just gone in recently. It makes it, it looks as if there might be a development going in, houses going in there. This is new. If that's the case, will they need, they'll need their own utilities, which will also involve process and access to a rec path, because that's what new developments are expected to do. Has this been taken into consideration? Is this known by the city as to be in process? Because it will have an impact too on what's going on in this area.
As far as I'm aware, I have not seen any permit applications through the Development Review Board for anything over there. And there is no path or anything on that side of the road on the official map that they'd be required to build. But I'm not aware of any actively, being actively pursued development.
Was the path construction ever considered easier and more feasible on that side of the path of Dorset Street? At least through the section that we're talking about where we have the biggest impact of construction?
So let me just make sure I reference the correct section here. So in, this is primarily on page six, starting on line 263, and the testimony for the next few paragraphs on the next page. This refers to Exhibit 1, the bicycle and pedestrian feasibility study that was conducted in 2017. At that time, they were looking at various options for how to connect the two paths that are existing that terminate at Old Cross Road and then also at Sadie Lane. So looking at different ways of filling this gap. And looked at a few different alternatives. The biggest reason why it was not pursued and determined that the other side of the road was not feasible was due to the need for multiple crosswalks on a high-speed road through here. And so this is really at the very highest level of what is allowable for a crosswalk. And it is out of the kind of recommended range of speeds and volume for a crosswalk here. And then the consideration, which is presented in that study and also the appendices of that study, was that by having it on the west side of the road, east side, the side of the road we're looking at, that it provides the most direct route and providing the most access to the existing network. And this is the, this is the side of the road that had been contemplated since that initial comprehensive plan.
I don't understand why they're saying there would be that many more road crossings because the rec path already crosses Dorset Street at the intersection of Old Cross and Nolan Farms. And then it crosses again down, well, obviously way down at Dorset Farms, way down there. So at the most, it would be one more to get it to Sadie Lane?
So this would also require either a crosswalk on the south side of that intersection with Old Cross and Nolan Farm or to bolster that crossing across Nolan Farm, because right now it brings you to a sidewalk on the other side. The path is on the north side of Nolan Farm. And there would likely need to be a crossing at the Cider Mill neighborhood where there's a lot of origins and destinations, people traveling through here and then again at Sadie Lane.
A lot of crossings across the streets are just with flashing lights and so on. Why would it have to be an actual crosswalk? I mean, why are you saying that that would have to be included in the number of built crossings on Dorset Street?
Which crossing? I don't think I understand.
If you put one on Cider, at Cider Mill Drive.
So that would just be a primary connection point, a big reason why the 2017 study recommended being on this side of the road is to connect to existing neighborhoods, to connect into the shared use path network. And so to keep to that purpose and need also. They would not be required, but it would be recommended.
Erica, just so I understand. So one of the study's conclusions was that a path on the east side of the road would be continuous with existing paths?
Yes, that is correct.
And then if you were to move the path to the west side of the road, how many crosswalks would need to be installed?
There would need to be.
At minimum?
At minimum, one, likely two.
And what does, what does that do to safety where, as opposed to having the path on the east side of the road?
So in this area, we studied some, we collected some data last summer, just a little bit north of this area, up by the Country Club, where the speed limits and the volumes are pretty similar. They're fairly comparable. And the speed limit was 40 miles per hour, but the 85% of people were traveling at 46 miles per hour or less. 40 miles per hour is not recommended. It is possible, but not recommended to have crossings on that higher, high of a speed road.
And why not?
Safety for the vulnerable users.
By that, you mean people using the crosswalk?
People using the crosswalk, yes, bicyclists, pedestrians, anyone crossing.
It increases the chances of vehicular pedestrian conflict and accidents?
Yes.
Thank you.
One more quick thing?
Sure.
And it goes back to, I guess, the whole design process. There are so many places in South Burlington, right along Dorset Street even, where the buffer between the travel lane and the path is very, is, there's not even grass. And there are also places where there's a buffer, but it's also the drainage ditch. The drainage isn't on the other side, which is where this part of what you're planning to build involves. Why isn't, why aren't those two options being considered for the area? for the area that we're concerned with?
So the buffer width I'll speak to first. Uh the ones that are right along the road, that is not the current standard for safety. Maximizing the separation is really the best practice uh for separating vehicles from pedestrians and bicyclists. So the wider separation we can get, the better. Uh in terms of the drainage, the the impacts would still be the same, it would just be that the the physical impacts. It would just be that the path would be the part we would be requesting easements for, rather than the drainage.
But there wouldn't be the need for the sloping into the drainage, you know, the the additional landscaping to have properties runoff, go into the drainage if it were just the paved path?
It would still need to be between ten and fifteen feet wide, and so then that would be the buffer. And so then there would be a ten-foot path on the back of that also, because it's still capturing the same amount of water. Uh that would be going to it, we would just be kind of swapping the physical location.
And is it possible to not have the maximum buffer? That, yes, everything has its, what would be the best? Is it considered to have less buffer in order to keep everything closer to within the right of way?
So we have done exactly that to make sure that the path itself does end entirely in the right of way. The ideal buffer is about seven feet, um and then you can also grow trees. In a lot of this area, we're down to two feet. Um in front of a few of the properties that we looked at today, there are, uh it's down to only two feet so that we do minimize that impact for exactly the reason you're asking.
Could it be closer? And then the the, even though the path would end at the right of way, there would be a place to start the construction process too, within the right of way?
Um it would greatly uh decrease the safety of the facility and we would have to, excuse me, uh put a, likely put a vertical barrier the entire length of it. Um like there are in other places where paths were built a while ago and now we have to have something in between. Uh which is not great, because then there's just more places for potential conflict than um. And it would only really get about two feet, which isn't going to, it doesn't change the extent of the
Oh, it does.
That much.
The telephone poles wouldn't have to be moved two feet.
It depends on the area.
Well, in front of our houses, it would be
Can I ask, s- since Mrs. Di Maroni is asking about those pre-existing path conditions where there's just asphalt straight across or there's a very small culvert, right? Those were built uh in the past and the standards have changed since then. Is that a true statement?
That is correct.
And and that's an important point to make, is that the standards change over time, things that were built in the past, right? They were built to a different standard. And is it true that where we have the ability to build to the standard, we like to do that for the reasons that the standard was created in the first place?
Yes, and we are working at minimums on some of these to minimize uh property impacts.
There are some weird exceptions, like, you know, where the bike path comes up Allen Road and it's kind of steep and there's a drop off and they had to put in a metal fence, right? Because they didn't want pedestrians or bikers to go off on the side there.
Well, I understand that things change, but I also understand that there's also, you know, a a a maximum and a minimum to most of what is allowed in the standards. And I'm just um hoping that instead of in places where it really has a big impact, like along our properties, it doesn't have to meet the maximum, it can be juggled even more than what you're already juggling to still fit as much as possible in the right of way, including some of the construction. And as I said, in our case, the telephone pole would not have to be moved. If everything were moved closer to the road by two feet. I guess that's all I have for questions. I probably will stand up again when it's time to say something.
That's why we're here.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mr. Chittenden, your opportunity for cross-examination. All your questions.
Hello, my name is Rob Chittenden. I own fifteen fifty and fifteen eighty Dorset Street. I'd like to thank Mrs. Di Maroni for stating uh many of my uh questions and positions on a lot of the things that we met and, you know, talked about on our walkthrough today. Um you know, I'll, I, I guess I'd like, al- almost like to repeat some of the same questions, even though we've gotten clarity to them in regards to why the path can't go on the west side of the road. You know, I, I understand it might not be preferred, but it could still be plausible. You know, one of the positions was stated was because of the speed limit. At past planning and zoning meetings I've attended, they've entertained lowering the speed limit. What would the speed limit have to be lowered to, to accommodate one more crossing?
So lowering the speed limit is something that could, within the written standards, impact that forty is technically allowed. Uh but it does, uh I would go back to where I had mentioned that the vehicles are actually traveling at forty-six miles per hour currently, eighty-five percent are traveling at uh forty-six. So uh I would want to at least see if vehicles are truly slowing down before saying that a crosswalk would become uh a safe viable option.
So it would be reasonable to say that it would take time and maybe another study to lower the speed limit and then to study whether or not the traffic is going slower, to see if it would be feasible to put the path on the other side of the road where it would be the path of least resistance, less construction, less drainage swales, less infringement onto property owners' properties and onto the, you know, the access for the store, which has been in existence for over seventy-five years. Would you say that's fair, that maybe another study would be in order?
Um I don't think I could speak to a lot of that as it would be hypothetical. I don't know what the actual impacts are on the other side of the road. We don't know uh what uh exists there in detail. So we would have to pretty much start the process over again, uh if the council decided that that is the route that they would like to go.
And just to be clear, if you moved it to the other side of the road, what would happen?
We would need to be installing crosswalks.
And what happens with crosswalks?
They uh increase or decrease the safety and uh increase risk for bicycles and pedestrians using the crosswalk.
And isn't part of uh the laying out process, consideration of the greatest public good?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question in regards to the safety. How many accidents in regards to pedestrians and motor vehicles have happened since the crosswalks have been installed on Dorset Street?
Uh I would have to go back and look at the data. So I, I can't speak to it without uh doing that research of before and after.
Cause you know, if you look at Dorset Street and where it crosses, it can continue from where the bike path is on the west side and continue down the west side, and it would be, as you stated, one additional crossing at Cider Mill Drive. And and then it would continue down Dorset Street to Dorset Farms, and that was the intent. Is that correct? So we would be adding one crossing?
And another crossing at Sadie Lane also, because there are the path connections in there too.
Yeah, but Sadie Lane already continues on the east side of the road south, so it wouldn't need to cross there.
This would be for northbound, folks traveling northbound, if they wanted to stay on the path, they would have to cross.
But at Sadie Lane, that goes along the entirety of the back of my property, where there's a full pre-existing rec path already going from Sadie Lane across the entire back of my property, connecting to the rec path that connects to Dorset Heights, the golf course and Old Cross Road. So I don't understand how that would be necessary for crossing there, considering the bike path already runs the entirety of Dorset Street.
Uh this would be more of a, a much more direct route than having people uh go all the way around and bringing people directly to uh homes, businesses, another neighborhood, so that people can take the most direct route.
But it's not for commuting, it's for recreation, so.
It could be for commuting, it's uh, yeah, our, it's very much part of the active transportation network, not just a recreation path.
It's called a shared use path, correct?
Correct.
Hold on, go ahead, next question?
Uh just looking at my notes, sir. Uh besides my statement, I don't have any further questions.
You don't have any further questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, all right, thank you. So at this point
Ms. Pugh?
Oh, you have a question?
I'm gonna
Turn on your mic, you're gonna turn your mic, yeah.
I'm going to play the I'm new card. Um was this decision, what, what? When did the city begin to discuss having a shared use path and bringing it out to this part of Dorset Street?
So I might be off by a year or so in one of your previous
Page one, line thirty-four.
Right, um so the paths were built to either end, or at least to Old Cross Road in nineteen ninety-two uh with an initial bond, and then in nineteen ninety-six, this specific section uh connecting all the way up to Midland at Dorset Farms uh was added to the comprehensive plan map. And so nineteen ninety-six was the first time it was in a documented city plan.
Um I guess, cause I noticed on the hearing list, there was the bicycle feasibility study in February two thousand seventeen. I haven't had the opportunity to read it. In that study, is that what you're saying? That the results of that study, that the Planning Commission and this body, I guess, approved um were to be on that side of the street?
Yes, the Planning Commission approved this as their preferred alternative. The minutes from that Planning Commission meeting are in the appendix of that study.
Okay, so for almost, this has been under discussion or planning for I'll brim it up, for almost ten years?
Yes, it's been a concept for, it's been a documented uh goal for about almost thirty years and has been uh actively studied for uh
Thank you, I'm, and I'm thinking of just this one little piece.
This uh scoping study started in twenty sixteen and published and adopted in twenty seventeen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so uh at this point, uh you've presented and there's been, oh, you have some more cross-examination you'd like to do?
I do.
Okay, come on down.
And answer my wife's question. We want it staked.
You're gonna have to identify yourself.
My name is Steve Di Maroni.
Thank you.
And none of our questions, you just kind of scoffed over them. This is real to us, that's a fifty thousand dollar mound system. I don't want to find out when they dug into it, that what we're gonna do at that point, where they say, well, it wasn't where you said it was going. My engineer can't read your prints, cause they don't mean anything. I want it staked. All these things have to be staked, and I need time to do that, also for the value of my property and also probably for the court cases gonna come up soon. So to sit here and just kind of push these things aside, this is real to us. We've been there a lot of years, I have no problem in the bike path. You stayed in your right of way, you'd been good, but you couldn't do that, you had to come way out then suggest that you're gonna put a road in there and then take the road out, whether they can find it in there or not, I've got that information. Now that's gonna be four or five years
Hold on a second, it, do you have a specific question, because this is the time for you to ask a question?
Understand what I said, cause that's what I was saying, I said, yes, I do have a question, I need it staked, because I can't go any further. And this has been going on for five years, very frustrating to me.
What is your specific question, Mr. Di Maroni?
I want it staked, so I know where they are. We have an engineer
You want it staked, okay.
Yeah, let me finish, I want it staked so that our engineer can tell you where the the S belts were. Maybe they are there, but maybe they're not. And there's also a road involved here that everybody seems to be scoffing over on. They plan on building it by moving onto my property.
I'm sorry, is there a question?
Two feet, well, if you stay two feet within the right of way, you don't need any of that. It's a very wide right of way down through there, it's thirty-three feet from the center line. You got plenty of room to put all that in there, I don't understand why you're abusing the property owners, quite frankly. And I'm getting really tired of it, because we don't get any thing from you. I don't have a problem with the bike path, I like them, but stay within your right of ways and don't condemn people's properties. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so if there are no more questions and you've already presented, oh, here's a concerned, interested party.
Hi, my name's uh Jim McCarthy, I'm owner of the Mill Market, um so I'm a business interest. I was actually, um, I wasn't aware of any of this, I'm sort of aware just by hearing things going on. Um but I wasn't formally informed of any of this that was happening until about a month ago, when I got the official letter and the plans. Um and first off, I just wanna say, I'm all for the bike path, I think it'd be great um for the community, bring some business in. However, um I think that the, losing the parking, the parking space you're taking up, I know that's been taken into consideration to minimize it, but two feet, I've got a small parking lot. I don't know, is is the financial impact of like the businesses been considered?
Did you, did you?
Yeah, that's the question, yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure if you had more to the question. Uh we're, we did not look at economic impacts to uh the business. We would be happy to discuss uh what is happening in that two feet also. Um the, that door has been open to discuss.
I, I, I mean, I, so is it, what's the process from here? I don't really know, I read through the papers and
Do.
My question is, is there some negotiation, can we get people out there and actually look at the spot, not just a, hey, here's a walkthrough, this is what we're gonna do? But hey, what can we do? How can we make this so it benefits everyone?
Uh first, uh business valuations is not part of the waiver valuation process, is that correct?
Correct, it's just land value.
Thank you, and then um did we see at the site visit, there was a a very large parking area on the north side of the building?
Yes.
Yeah, that parking is for employees, other tenants, it's just filled up by, you know, eight AM, it's completely full. And it's for trucks, deliveries, it's not a safe place for people to be parking.
I'll speak for you to say that the city is willing to entertain and discuss uh aspects of this project after the hearing, uh outside of the hearing process. Uh but tonight is not the time to have those discussions, if that's uh, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, I'd love to have those discussions, so be following up, thank you.
Thank you. So now at this time, I think it's time for the um the landlords to make their presentation, correct, Colin?
Provided there's no redirect by the, by the city at this point. Yes, thank you.
So Mrs. Di Maroni, did you wanna come up and give your presentation? Please? Sure, please. Okay, yep.
Oh, no, that's okay, thank you. Um my name is Laura Di Maroni and I live at fifteen twenty Dorset Street. Site visit before this meeting will clarify my points and concerns. Construction of the southbound left turn lane into Cider Mill Drive, which starts at our property, our, our driveway and continues to the Mill Deli, was within the city's right of way. It involves shifting the northbound travel lane to the east, creating a sharper slope in front of our property, reconfiguring the drainage ditches and temporarily blocking our driveway to reinforce the culvert that goes under it. This process used most of the city's right of way and removed most of the grass buffer between the road and drainage. Of note is that our mailbox was hit by the snowplow the first winter after construction because the pavement, our driveway and mailbox post are now adjacent to each other. This change in the available right of way means that a large portion of our property is required to construct the shared use path as it now is planned. This impact is greater than on any other homeowner's property. Temporary and permanent easements are proposed. We have several concerns, from moving the existing power pole to new landscaping, drainage and culverts. What will happen to our driveway and yard where large construction vehicles will be driving back and forth? However, the most important issue is that our septic mound system is located in the corner of our property and near our driveway and toward Dorset Street. We've been unable to get exact footage of the easements from the city. We're told that this exact information, information won't be available until the project goes into the final plans and bid plans steps. The engineer who designed our septic mound system is unable to determine whether or not the system will be damaged from the plans that are available. He needs exact footage. We're also concerned about the ambiguity of the permanent and We're also concerned about the ambiguity of the permanent and temporary easement figures included in the warranty date of easement that we're supposed to accept. We can't agree to more or less square feet or right of and between approximate stations followed by unexplained numbers. We've met with city councillors, members, city council members, attended meetings, expressed our concerns regarding construction of the proposed shared use path. We've suggested alternative locations for the path that will have less impact on our property and others. We haven't been given serious consideration. This is where my questions are. We question whether Green Mountain Power is aware of the plan to move their pole farther away from Dorset Street. We question whether the survey markers across the street from our property indicate a new housing development, which will need utilities and the required access to a recreation path. We question whether the property between the southern border of our property and Cider Mill Drive is considered a wetland based on the amount of runoff and vegetation that is present. Wetlands are protected. We need to lessen the impact on our property. We need definite answers and acceptable alternatives.
Thank you very much. Does the city have any cross-examination they want to do?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chittenden, your, your time to present? Do you, do you have something to present?
Yes.
Okay, come on down.
Again, my name is Robert Chittenden. I own fifteen fifty and fifteen eighty Dorset Street. Um, before I start my statement, I just want to preface it with, this isn't a statement directed at the city council. It's more at my experience with the town in general, my past experiences with the town. And it's not, it's not one council member or the council in itself. Uh, before I get started with that, the information packet that was given to us at the beginning of the meeting, as Mrs. DiMaroni stated, we haven't received. There's a lot of information in there that we didn't have access to. It, it just feels like it's really last minute. Um, you know, to follow that up with the concerns about the, the payments. To not take into account, you know, if you look at a property value that's just land, I think everybody can agree that there's more to than, to land than just land. It's land, it's the houses, it's the businesses, it's the parking lots, the actual impact on what the project is gonna impact. It's not just the grass that it's gonna impact. And so for that, whether it's the bare minimum or not, it doesn't seem like the ethical way to operate. It seems like those things should of course be taken into consideration. It seems like a phone call should be made. It seems like instead of an email, it's just, somebody call me, stop in, hey Rob, let's talk about this. But those things never happen. And instead, it's just, it's, it's forced down our throats. You're gonna take this, and if you don't, we're gonna put our lawyers on you and we're gonna seize it. And that is not a good way to start. It's not a good way to get what you want. You know, I like, I, as well as other town members, like, I've used the right pa- bike path. I'm not totally against the path. It's the way it's being forced. It's twenty-four feet on my front yard, not six or eight or ten. It's, it's, it's the way they're going about doing it. It's the lack of, of communication and, and, and the impeding on business. It's, it just doesn't seem like a very well, um, thought out way to operate. And with that said, um, I have a statement I like to read. It's really frustrating for me to be up here, just, just, I have a lot of history with this town and it just, I feel like I shouldn't be here, so pardon my inexperience with public speaking.
Do, do you have a, a printed version of that you wanted to hand out afterwards or before?
I, I do not.
Okay.
So, um, my name is Rob Chittenden and I speak to you as a resident owner of the properties fifteen fifty and fifteen eighty Dorset Street that have been in my family since the eighteen fifties. Generations of my family have cared for this land, built businesses on it, and contributed to the fabric of this community. I'm here today because the city of South Burlington is attempting to take twenty-four feet of my front yard through eminent domain for a bike path. They're moving forward with this against my objections without answering my questions and without ever walking the land and staking it until today, when it was required for the city council walkthrough. Let me give you some context because the history matters here. In the early nineteen nineties, the city tried and failed in court to force my father to place a bike path through the front of the cider mill. The plan would have decimated the cider mill's parking lot and crippled the business. The court rightly rejected it and recognized the harm. Later, in the early two thousands, a path was installed along the back of the property. So currently, I'm sure everyone's aware, but there's currently a bike path that connects all along the back of both my properties that goes from Sadie Lane, which continues south to the rest of the bike path. So it's, it's just, it's hard to see the need here for eminent domain. You know, it, the, the solution worked. It went along the new development and it respected property, um, private property boundaries. In twenty twelve, uh, let's see here, until today, no one from the town walked the site with me or staked it, the property line. I've asked through emails and phone calls. I've asked for clarity of how this is gonna impact businesses. I've asked for clarity of how, you know, they said ten thousand square feet. No response, no phone calls, no emails, nothing. Just fell on deaf ears. It's beyond frustrating to say, we're gonna take this. We're gonna take ten thousand square feet of your property. We're gonna use it as we feel like. And when we're done, we're gonna leave it how we want, with no input from the property owner. You know, the, the maps that were sent were nearly impossible to interpret. My neighbors, site engineers tried looking at them, couldn't read them. I can read a map. They wouldn't tell us where it was gonna go. So up until today, literally this morning, we couldn't tell where the path is gonna go. I was told it was gonna be twenty-four feet off the road and another ten feet. And when you look at those numbers, it infers that the trees are gonna be cut down. I'm literally, as, as we all walk tonight for the blue house, I'm losing half of my front yard. It's unnecessary. The, the, the green space and the boundaries, it sounds good on paper until it's on someone's private property. How would anybody on this council like to have half of their front yard removed for a rec path, when we can narrow the boundaries? I'm not against it. Put it in your right of way. Put it along the side of the road. Put the jersey barriers up. Put a fence up. Just it, it, it's just, it's wrong to go about it this way and to force eminent domain for a bike path. This is not a bridge or interstate overpass. It's not a public need, it's a want. And, and, and that's what frustrates me, to be in this position where I have to plead my case for a, a want, not a need. With the smaller buffers we've touched upon tonight, they're located where you mentioned on the corner of Allen Road and Spear Street, where there's the fence. There's also smaller buffers along the interstate underpass and other areas we've discussed. Now, I understand the goal is to have the biggest buffer and the best use of the land and the safest means possible. But in some instances where there's existing businesses and parking lots that shouldn't be cut into, it's, it, we shouldn't be at this point right now. You know, I ask each, each of you to reconsider not just the route of the bike path, but the way this process has been handled. You know, it, it's nothing, it's, it's, it's not moral, it's not ethical, and it's not necessary, what's happening tonight. And, and it's just not the right way to go about doing it. And it frustrates me and it angers me and it literally makes me sick to my stomach. And I don't say that, I'm not exaggerating. I've had sleepless nights about this, just, just for the way that it's gone about. I, I've, you know, can you, can anybody here imagine if someone, if your front yard is gonna be cut in half for a path and then it, it, it's really frustrating and I'm gonna leave it at that. Thank you for your time. Does anybody have any questions for me about how this will affect me or any, anything that we, that I tried to touch upon when we were doing the site visit?
This is the opportunity for the city to, to ask you questions or cross-examine.
Is this also a time when the council members can talk to me?
If, if we have any questions, right. I'll ask the city first.
I, I do have a few questions if counsel.
Sure.
Um, do you reside at fifteen fifty Dorset?
I own the home.
Do you reside there?
Do you want to come over and have coffee?
Do you sleep there on a daily basis?
I do reside there. I do sleep there.
Have you filed a rental registration with the city for that property?
It's a registered Airbnb. Um, permitted, thank you.
When was the, how often do you sleep at fifteen fifty Dorset Street?
I'd have to check my notes and get back to you.
Uh, on a weekly basis, let's say. How many days a week?
I'm not sure.
When was the last time you contacted the city about this project?
I'd have to check my emails.
If I said it was, uh, February of twenty-four, does that sound right to you?
I can't recall.
Do you remember when you contacted them before that?
I can't recall.
Would it, would July of twenty twenty-two sound about right?
I don't know.
Did you sign for any of the certified letters the city sent you at fifteen fifty or fifteen eighty Dorset Street?
I don't recall.
You don't recall if you signed for them?
Would you like to tell me if I did or did not, sir?
Sure, I think there's exhibits in the packet that show that you didn't. And, uh, how did we have to get in touch with you about this?
Uh, well, you sent me snail mail, which I received. You sent me certified mail, which I did not sign for. You reached out to my attorney, which I received his email. So I received it multiple ways and then I was also
And you're complaining about the city not trying to contact you or talk to you about this project?
Uh, no, actually that's incorrect, sir. You took words out of my mouth. I reached out to city officials and asked them specific questions, which they did not respond to. So did they reach out to me with proceedings for this meeting? Yes, they did. Did they send a sheriff tracking me down? Yes, they did. Did they answer my questions of how this would affect me and my business and my property? No, they did not. Thank you for your question.
Do you know why we had to do that?
Please tell me.
Because the constitution requires that you receive notice of a hearing like this, so we had to go through all of those hoops to do that. We would have liked to not have to have done that. Um, it.
Does the constitution require, does the constitution require you to answer property owners' questions about their personal property infringement?
I, no, but.
Thank you.
Do you, let me ask you again, are you, fifteen fifty, is that your house?
I do own it.
You own it? Do you reside there?
Why are you asking?
Because I'm curious whether that's your primary residence or not.
I don't feel the need to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions, counsel.
Thank you. So now is the time, if you're finished, uh, that both landlords could make a, a short, brief closing statement, correct?
I have.
I'm sorry.
I have, uh, some rebuttal testimony.
Oh, you do? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. Does counsel have any questions for Mr. Chittenden at all? Any comments? So you have rebuttal?
I do. I would like to ask Erica a few questions about, uh, the level of communication and the efforts the city has gone through to contact landowners and work with them regarding the project. Um, just while you were with, you've been with the city since twenty twenty-two?
That's correct, July twenty twenty-two.
Although, I was able just now to name a couple of specific dates of when you reached out to Mr. Chittenden and had some conversations with him, including one where he basically told you to go pound sand in, uh, what was that, February of twenty twenty-four? Uh, what other efforts have you made to reach out to Mr. Chittenden to talk about this project?
I believe all of the dates are in here, I have. Uh, so all property owners were made aware of the right-of-way process, just that this was happening, that they would likely be impacted before we knew uh, the extent. Uh, that was on July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, and then in terms of formal offer letters, uh, they were sent in December of, there was one sent in December of twenty twenty-three. Uh, another offer package sent in December twenty twenty-four. Uh, and offer packages had also been sent via email to ensure that people, uh, had received them.
That's in addition to the notices for this particular hearing this evening?
Yes, that is correct.
Did you, aside from formal letters, um, you mentioned emails. Was there email back and forth and other efforts to communicate with landowners?
Uh, yes, I corresponded by email many times with, uh, property owners.
Did you meet on-site with some property owners when requested to go over the project?
Uh, anytime it was requested to set up a time on-site, uh, I met with, uh, property owners.
Okay, in doing that, did you ever delineate the rights of way on people's properties to help them understand sort of what rights were being asked for and what was in the deeds?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing further.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to rebut that if I could, please, briefly, real quick.
Yes, you have an opportunity to rebut.
Thank you. I didn't feel, I'm not denying that I wasn't communicating heavily with the town. I think that's clear. I didn't feel the need to meet with the town any further because I thought it was a choice. I didn't know this was being forced down my throat. Never in a million years did I think eminent domain would be used for a bike path. So had I known it would gotten to this level, then I probably would have been more apt to communicate. But I thought this was a choice and I didn't know I didn't have a choice.
Thank you. Do you, well, now's the time for short closing presentations.
I just want to answer what she said, that's all.
You, you, okay, sure.
Yes, we did meet with her several times.
Can you just identify yourself one more time, please?
Yes, Steve DiMaroni, but nothing was ever resolved. All we got was the same thing back in the mail, no matter what I asked. So it's very frustrating. Like Rob said, this keeps me awake at night. I never thought the city would hire somebody, use eminent domain when you've got a huge right of way there. You've got a huge right of way, both sides of the road. You can't ignore the other side. There's thirty-three feet from the center line there too, and you are ignoring it. So if you want to move the poles, move them over there. It's a perfect thing to do. Power company would be glad to do it. But nothing has ever been resolved, so she can say she met with us, but meeting with us and sending the same stuff back to us a week later means nothing. And nothing was ever staked, nothing was ever laid out. So I'm sorry, I'm not trying to get her in trouble. It's just that I'm very frustrated with this whole process. It's been too bad, take it or leave it. And I just saw that with him, just trying to going after Rob and who the owns the house or not, really? That's awful. You should be ashamed yourselves.
Would it be fair to say, Erica, that you've ignored the west side of Dorset Street in project planning?
Uh, no, it would not.
I didn't understand what you asked. Ask it again, please.
Uh, Mr. DiMaroni said that the city has ignored the west side of Dorset Street as an option for this project. And so I just wanted to make it clear to the council that the city did not ignore the west side of the street in planning for this project.
Right, thank you. So now's the time for final closing statements. Mrs. DiMaroni, do you want to make a final closing statement at all, or your husband?
I don't think I have anything more to say.
Okay, Mr. Come up if you want to say something. Just state your name one more time.
Yeah, I guess the whole point in our concern. Oh, yeah, Laura DiMaroni. The whole point of our concern is the fact that first of all, we didn't feel that this was necessary to be built on our side of the road. We've presented many times to council members via paperwork, attending meetings, meeting at our house, um, offering alternative plans or suggestions. Um, wondering if there were any viable ways to prevent this section to be used. It involves so many houses and driveways, even though those people may have given you the, the right now to do it. This path is going to go in front of many people's homes in a very small section. A business, two roads, Cider Mill and Link Road. And then again, actually right at, at Sadie Lane too. There's a lot of impact that's going to happen as, at least from Link Road down to the end, that doesn't need to be done the way it's being proposed. The other side of the road is a really good option. It doesn't impact houses. It doesn't impact moving utilities. It involves the right of way that's already existing and not being used. Um, we were told that it's too late, that this has been in the process for so many years. We're not going to bother looking at it any other way. Well, I think that that's a pretty lousy excuse. And I'm, you know, it may be true that that's the way you feel, but that isn't being open-minded enough to the concerns of the people who are really involved. And as, as Rob and, and our, and the people that are involved here tonight are talking about, we're really impacted. This is a huge chunk of our property. You look at it from where we were today on our site visit, where those lines are, the pole, the markers, You look at it from where we were today on our site visit, where those lines are, the pole, the markers, it's a big chunk that nobody else is having to give up. Nobody, we weren't even part of the process to decide that that's where it was going to be. We were just told, this is it, we're gonna give you this much fair market value and live with it. So I feel that there should be more going on before this is a done deal. And I hope that you take it seriously. We, we really are so, you know, impassioned with the fact that we are being, we're at a disadvantage, even though we're in favor of rec paths. It's just that not the way it's being presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chittenden, do you have a final comment?
Again, I'd like to thank Mrs. DiMaroni for eloquently stating what I feel is hard for me to stand up here because I take it so personally, because it is my personal property. And it's also impacting my lesee dramatically. And so, you know, in closing, I, I just feel like the property owners were never taken into consideration, nor was the dialogue ever opened up. And I don't feel like it should be too late to think about the other side of the road or look at other options. Just cause the snowball's gotten this big doesn't mean we should roll it. I think, I think it dramatically impacts a lot of people, and, um, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So at this point, uh, we have the opportunity to close the hearing, unless.
City, do you wanna make a statement?
Say it. Oh, does the city wanna make a final statement at all? Sorry.
I don't think we need to, thank you.
Okay, so everybody's had an opportunity to make a final statement? Right, right. So there is an opportunity to submit any extra written, uh, evidence or testimony to the council. If we choose to do that tonight, there would be a cutoff date, after which you would not be allowed to. Does anybody need to do that? Does the city have a need to submit any extra evidence or testimony?
I have a question about.
Hold on just.
There may be one or two exhibits of the history of communication with property owners that were not provided in your packet today that we would provide as further evidence within the next, uh, let's say by the end of this week. Certainly, it would be copies of emails, but, uh, and other written correspondence between the city and the landowners.
By the end of Business Friday?
That deadline's totally fine, thank you.
Mr. DiMaroni?
I just, one final question.
Sure.
Steve DiMaroni, where does this go from here when it leaves here? Because I know that it has to go someplace where the final thing is done, and that's not here. It's either in court or it's in the public service board. Where does it go? And I suspect the lawyer can answer that.
Well, from this point, the, the city would make its decision as to necessity. If the city deemed that this was, um, necessary to take this land, uh, that would be the city's decision. Uh, there are then rights under statutes if you want, wish to pursue it further, but that would be the final decision of the city.
Of the city, I know, but I wanna know where it goes from there, because, you know, as it's continuing now, I don't plan on having it end here, because I wanna know where it's going from there. I suspect it'll be in court. But that's what I wanna know, is what's the procedure from here?
Uh, I would just wanna say that the city's also making a determination as to compensation in addition to necessity. Uh, and once the written decision is recorded, I don't think it's appropriate for me to be providing legal advice to uh, other parties, so I'm gonna decline to answer that question.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's about it. I would, I'm not in a position, I'm not in a position, I am a lawyer, I'm, I'm not in the city council, I'm the lawyer for the city, I'm the city attorney.
Right.
I'm here to advise the council.
Yeah, we need to know where to go from here.
But I think you would have to, you'd have to hire your own lawyer, lawyer to talk about that. I, I can't, I'm not gonna give you legal advice from, from this.
I'm not looking for legal advice, I'm looking for what happens generally. I mean, there, there's public service law that says certain things have to happen, and that's why I'm asking what it's gonna be, because at this point, we can't continue ahead because there hasn't been stake, and that has not been addressed here still. And I, I can't understand why that hasn't happened. That's just something you're required to do before you take the next step. I have to know the full impact of what you're doing on my property, so, and I don't know that.
Uh, I can say that, uh, this proceeding is outside of the Public Utility Commission context, which you may be speaking about, or the Public Service Board. I will also state that, uh, the city is willing to continue discussions with landowners informally outside the hearing process. If they would like to, uh, speak to the project director about, uh, where project elements are going to go or other aspects of it, the city is happy to, as it has in the past, speak with them, just not tonight at this hearing.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. However, every time we've met with somebody, they're not the decision makers. So it's very frustrating to leave and realize that none of your input had any use. I mean, I just, I don't understand this process. I mean, I'm not against any of this. I'm against the way you're doing it, you don't have to. But you gotta give me something so that I don't feel like I'm being run over. Because, you know, eminent domain is a big deal. That's not normally used. Now, I don't know why you did it this time either, because you have a huge right-of-way, but that's, you decided to go that route, and I hope you don't do it in the future on bike paths, because it's not fair to the citizens of South Burlington. They should have some input. And whether you like their input or not, that's fine. I might not like your input, but I listen to it. And I take judgment based on that, so I will listen. However, in this case, I don't feel anybody's being treated fairly. And the people that have signed, don't fool yourself, they signed because they felt they had no option. That was the whole thing. It was, it was done very heaven-handedly right from the beginning. And that, that's where we are now, very frustrated and very upset and very disappointed, quite frankly, in the city to, to use these methods to get something that they could have easily negotiated for, but chose not to. And chose to send people out that wouldn't even take it an inch back, or even suggest anything like that, or even listen to them. I mean, that's not the way the, the process should work, so, thank you.
Thank you. So we've, oh, you wanna make another statement, Mrs. DiMaroni? Come up, you gotta come up to the microphone so that we can hear you.
Laura DiMaroni, um, last December, we spoke to the council. At that point, all the neighbors that were involved, that were opposed to the path, had met. And we had created a document of our concerns and our, um, proposals for alternatives and so on. And I, and I read it at the meeting and gave everybody a copy. Is that still on file, or should I also get, get that to you this week?
If, yeah, if you have a, a copy of that and you wanna submit it, um, how should she provide that?
You can provide that directly to, to me. I can give you my email, I'll give you my card, and you can provide information directly to me, and then I will get it before the council for their consideration.
I mean, it's been, it's been on the record, but it was in a December meeting.
Yeah, because it was a different proceeding. This is the proceeding and the opportunity to provide evidence for this matter right now, so I would recommend if you want the council to consider it, please, please submit it.
Okay.
Can you submit it by, by Friday, four o'clock?
Oh, sure, I can do it tomorrow.
That's great.
I'll meet, I'll, we'll meet with you after and give you my card.
Thank you.
Stick around.
Yep.
Uh, are you an interested party or a landowner that's part of this? You're a neighbor, but you're not a landowner that's affected by this directly?
I, I think I'm affected by it directly.
I, where, what, what is your property location?
It's on the corner of Link Road and, uh, Dorset, in that neighborhood. I just wanna say something real quick, and, and that's, that's it.
I, I, I have to stop you, cause I don't think that you have the opportunity to, to speak about this right now, cause this concerns the two landowners. And the proceeding is a, is a necessity hearing, but I appreciate your wanting to speak, okay? All right, so they, we've had presentations by both sides, we've had rebuttals. Um, we're at this point where we want to close the hearing. So can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close the hearing.
Um, so I would recommend that we don't close the hearing, that we keep the evidence open until this Friday at four o'clock. And then if the parties wish to submit, uh, additional documentation for the council's consideration in making their decision, uh, I will provide my contact information that can be submitted to me, and I will get it before the council. At Friday, four o'clock, the, um, we recommend the evidence closed. So I would recommend that you, uh, adjourn for this evening, make a motion to adjourn for this evening, keep the evidence open until Friday at four o'clock. Uh, and then at that point, it would be closed.
We adjourn this necessity hearing.
Motion to adjourn necessity hearing.
But.
Should we also move to close the hearing at four P M. Friday?
Correct. Keep the evid, keep the evidence open until four P M. Friday.
Move to keep the evidence open until four P M. Friday.
Correct.
A second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion by the council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. So we are adjourned for the, for the necessity hearing right now. Thank you very much. Make sure you get your card, Mrs. DiMaroni.
Thank you for your time, councilors.
Thank you. Um, the next agenda item is, um, I think it's, uh, just other business. Is there any other business tonight at all? Jesse, was there anything? No? All right, then can I have a motion to adjourn the city council special meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, everybody. Not for this, I don't think, no.